Good evening, everybody. It is 7:00 PM. Welcome to this meeting of the Bristol Warren Regional School Committee. It is Monday, September 23rd. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't believe anybody has signed up for public comment. So we can move straight into our presentation from PMA and Perkins Eastman. Chad.
All right. Good evening. Great to see everybody. So tonight, we are going to fill you in on what was discussed at the Building Committee meeting last week. We'll run you through some of that materials. It was a long meeting. We had a lot of material to cover. So we have sort of a condensed version, but we're happy to answer any questions that the committee might have. So first, as always, we'll start with a general progress update. So the phase that we're in right now is the 60% construction document phase. And that's really getting the details of the design resolved. So on Thursday, we spent a lot of time talking about finishes. In this case, it was exterior finishes. After this, we'll move on to interior finishes at one of the upcoming meetings. But we'll give everybody a preview of what some of that stuff looks like. And again, remember, like colors are not final at this point. We're selecting materials. That's the basis of design. We don't know who the manufacturer is because it needs to be competitively bid. So we're going to be looking for three equal products. Of course, three manufacturers aren't going to have identical colors. So we're sort of shooting for a general color palette, color family, so to speak, at this point. So since the last time we met with this group, the Building Committee has had a few meetings. The design has engaged local stakeholders as necessary. Today was a day full of user group meetings, the high school. Couple of weeks ago, we met with the Bristol Fire Department, the Warren Fire Department. We're starting to get into details, lighting, like lighting control systems in the building. We've also met with Bristol Planning Board. We had a Butters meeting just last week. So lots happening right now as we round sort of the final few corners of the construction document phase. Biggest question and decision right now is really the fields, and we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. Once we lock in what direction the fields are going to go in, we can move to the final phase of design, shooting for towards the end of this year. So we can hold that bid schedule for early next year, get a contractor on board Break Grounds with the spring next year. And with that, I will turn it to Perkins Eastman to run through some of their exterior and athletic fields materials.
Probably should leave this up high for now. So Nell Dawes is going to walk us through a design update, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about synthetic turf fields after that.
Good evening, everyone. This is one of our initial design sketches. I'm sure it's all familiar to you. This was our initial approach when we're thinking about the design of the building. This is coming out of the organizational concept, you know, our approach to planning. How would we create a building that was efficient? And so we are a two-story, one singular building, which is from an interiors perspective and a planning perspective, that's a really good thing. It's very efficient. It gives us good sightlines. It gives us good adjacencies. It's good for security. But we want the same design narrative and design approach to carry through to the exterior as well. So when we look at this from the outside in, we don't want this to be a read of one homogeneous building. We are, you know, conscientious of our context and our surroundings. We want to be thoughtful and responsive to our neighbors. That's why we're two-story in scale. But we, you know, this is a community building, so we do want it to be elevated and celebrated, you know, at a different sort of intensity to the residential scale adjacent. So the majority of this building, it's a brick masonry building. It's good, that's a very good material to pick for aesthetics, durability, maintenance, cost. And, you know, we really like brick as a material. But like I said, we want to be able to read that village idea on the exterior of the building. So that means breaking up the massing, you know, creating a scale to it. Rather than one big homogeneous singular building, you're reading volumes, volumes that are nestled in the landscape, floating above the landscape in, when we talk about the media center. And then those interstitial spaces between the volumes that create really nice place-making and good human-scale spaces for students. So that was kind of our approach as we're starting to look through. We're obviously inspired by the context. We're looking at Warren. We're looking at Bristol. You know, what does the neighborhood look like? So the color palette is very much, you know, inspired by the colors and the textures that we see surrounding us. And obviously also the site. The site is a really important part of this project. Chad touched on this before. So we are an open spec. So we can't say this is the brick that we want and everybody agrees and that's the one we're going to get. So we approach it in a broader context. And what we've done is we've looked at the two largest manufacturers, that's Supply Road Island. And we've gone through and we have samples on the table, so happy to sort of walk anyone through that that wants to have a look. And what you'll see, so on the left is sporting brick and on the right is consolidated brick. When you look at those bricks, you can, you can see that they are thematically similar, but actually there's a lot of variation there. So first and foremost, we're picking the brick based on the manufacturer that we get because that's the majority of our palette. And then, you know, the cement panel, the aluminum, all the other materials in the palette, we, we, we match and we read off that product. So we have two, we're working, because we have a lot of brick, we're looking at a light, a light brick and a dark brick. And a, and a combination of blends within those bricks. So, you know, as design team is like looking at this and refining and testing and studying, what we do is we sort of enlarge a small portion of the elevation so we can really beef up the scale and look at, you know, the subtlety, because obviously exposure, how the sunlight hits it. You know, we're talking about subtle tones here, so it's important, and that's how we test the brick idea. And as you'll see here, you'll start to see some of the detailing and the corbeling in the brick. We're starting to pull in, you know, it's not just flat brick surface. We have relief and details. We get some nice subtle shadows across the facade that will obviously change throughout the day. So this portion of the facade, we're looking at the media center and the outdoor space that is below that. Next slide. This is the lighter brick blend. So in, you know, and when we look at the two brick blends, it's probably three-quarters of the building is the lighter brick blend, and the darker brick blend is just for accents, like the media center, the auditorium. Here in the facade, what you're seeing, the pop-up there, that is a section that is in the cement panel. That's where we have stairways or breakout spaces, kind of, you know, accentuated massing in the volume with a good sightline, view corridors out to the courtyards, and in this case, looking out over the creek. Sorry, we're just going to switch windows. When we share this with everyone, this is interactive. So if you scan the QR code on your phone, you'll be able to play around with this yourselves. So looking at the building first, taking a look at the main entry here. So you're seeing the two brick blends here. We'll obviously have some signage by the entry. Exactly what that signage looks like is still in development. It's a placeholder of obviously a very prominent front door, which differs from what the school has now. Shade and weather protection over the entry and also accentuating the entry. You have a straight view sightline all the way through to the corridor beyond. Here in the lighter brick, this is the administrative suite that is completely, that is immediately off the entry. And then the beginnings of the, the media center volume that floats up in the, in the landscape there. We go back and we jump in now and we're looking at the academic outdoor learning courtyard. So again, you're seeing the lighter brick, which as I said, is the majority of the brick, is in the lighter palette. Some of this detailing of the corbeling of the brick, and it is a contemporary articulation of corbeling. What you're seeing here is, in one location in the academic courtyard, we are showing it's a, it's an architectural, detailed and exaggerated scupper. And there will be some, you know, an opportunity for some environmental graphics to explain the stormwater management system, which this also links to our CHIPS points and, you know, overall how the design is responsive to the rainwater and stormwater design. Here, you're seeing the bridge that connects Academic Wing A and B on the second floor. Some of the darker brick, this is celebrating some special, special program. This is some of the CTE spaces in this wing with business and finance. And then, just spin around, we're seeing more of Wing A. Some of that brick detailing that you're starting to see on the facade. These are overflow sculptures, so we bring in some relieving brick detailing. And then as we spin back around, now we're looking back towards the main entry. So this is the main entry atrium that then looks, looks through to the main drop-off. And now jumping into the café courtyard. So this would be the entrance from the bus drop-off. So entry from the bus drop-off is here. This is a much more active courtyard. This is where the cornhole and the picnic tables would go. This is the café that you're seeing is the bigger expansive glass here. As we're spinning to the right here, this is Wing C. So on the first floor here, this is the kitchen and some back-of-house space. Up on the second floor, this is the art studios. So we have a gallery, which is why the windows are at a higher height. And then we're getting daylighting coming in to that space. And we also have skylights in the Wing C area. Spinning back around to the drop-off. And then Wing B is the longest of the academic areas. So we've got some of the cement, fiberglass panel that you see as the accent at the end of the wing. This is the darker contrasting brick. Still get some of that corbeling detailing. And then kind of taking us back around.
I'd say let's wait until the end because they may be answered with the next piece. Thank you.
All right. So I just want to give you a little overview of synthetic turf fields, just to talk a little bit about what we've been looking at. So this is the existing high school site where we have softball fields, two multi-use fields, the performance field inside of the track, and then the practice football field, as well as the tennis courts. So when we look at the new plan, the tennis courts get relocated towards Chestnut Street. The multipurpose field down on the northwest corner of the site will remain. That has to stay untouched. The softball field gets moved up to the north along with the practice football field and the throwing event. So all those fields just get relocated. And what we end up doing is we have, right now, we're proposing to have the baseball field brought onto the site, which would go in the location of the existing high school. So we lose one multipurpose field. So the idea behind the synthetic turf field from a programmatic standpoint is that it gets more hours of use than a natural grass field. Therefore, we can lose that additional multipurpose space, multipurpose field because the, a synthetic turf field would take on the time of three regular turf fields, regular grass fields, I should say. So what that means is if we left the synthetic, or if we left the football field as a natural grass, then we're going to be down a field and maybe that field, whoops, sorry, ends up going where the baseball field is and then the baseball field doesn't go on site. Just so just some things to think about as we look at the programmatic needs for the athletics program. So just to talk a little bit about turf fields. Can't read this one this far away, so hold on a second. So this is just a quick slide that shows costs from low-end grass to high-end grass, which is more what you need for a performance field and then synthetic turf. The cost of a regular grass field's around $800,000. A synthetic turf is twice as much, but it's also dealing three times the amount of work as a, as one grass field. There's a couple of costs here that talk about annual maintenance. There is obviously maintenance that goes along with both fields. A little harder to maintain a natural grass field as opposed to the turf field, but there will still be required resurfacing of that field to, to keep it up to its top performance. Hours of use, your high-end grass field, you can get 850 hours of use out of that, out of that field versus 3,000-plus hours out of a, out of a synthetic turf field. So just some numbers there to look at. As far as the type of turf field, it's actually come a long way since the 1960s when they first built, I think it was Astro, Astro Stadium in, in Texas. But it started as just a very hard, sometimes a concrete base with just a nylon carpet that would be on the top of it. By the 70s, they started to add a little bit of padding underneath between the concrete and the, and the grass surface. The grass surface also evolved to a polypropylene, still a little bit rough of a surface. And then by the 2000s, the turf started to look a little bit more like grass. They started to develop a polyethylene material, which is not as abrasive to, it's actually not that abrasive at all to land on as opposed to the older turfs. So that middle detail that you see in there, you can start to see they're adding a little bit more padding to the turf fields, the synthetic turf fields and, but using a rubber aggregate. By 2010, very similar design, but now we're starting to look at getting shock absorbers into the turf to address that, you know, fall protection as student athletes would hit the turf and, you know, just helps reduce the amount of concussions. And then to where we are now, where we're looking at similar systems, but not using rubber, really looking at some, some bio materials such as quartz and sands and stuff. So the system that we would propose using for a synthetic turf field would not be a petroleum-based system. It would be plant-based organic materials such as quartz. Cork is really the material that we recommend. They do have some other materials that are made of like walnut shells and, and things like that, but a little bit more abrasive. So. So in summary, that's, that's what we're, we're looking at. We're also studying the drainage of the synthetic field. But from a programmatic standpoint, you know, there seems to be a lot of need from here and from the athletic director and other programs that happen at the high school site that a synthetic field would, would help address a lot of issues as far as managing playing time for the students, getting them out onto the fields earlier in the spring when a lot of schools that already have synthetic turf fields are practicing outside and the students at Bristol Warren are still fighting for space inside of the gym to run their practices. It might also allow for other sports to possibly get added, such as field hockey, if there's an interest in, in town to, to look at that. So. So there's a lot of, a lot of benefits. The athletic director could probably tell you even more than I about the needs for a field like this at, at the high school.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'm going to let Chad wrap up the budget here.
Don't go too far. Last couple of quick slides here. So cash flow update. Nothing very exciting right now. The exciting stuff happens when we get into construction. So you'll see that jump up next April, May. That's foundations deal for the new building, material procurement, things like that. Right now, still relatively low spend. Stage three totals, I think, are around $4.7 million with around $3 million of that coming back in the form of RIDE reimbursements at that 63% rate. So no surprises there. And then project schedule, next steps. So that CD 60 is our next milestone. That will be submitted to RIDE later this year. Once RIDE clears that CD 60, we move on to the 100% design package, and that is the bid set. So that will be end of the year, maybe into January, depending on timing of the turf grass decision. But that is all we have for tonight, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chad. Any questions? Jessica.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. They're a little, they're a little bit of everything. I was not, I'm usually not able to go to any of the Building Committee meetings, so I tried to replay some, but I didn't really see anything this week. In the, in early September, I ended up having a phone, a conference call with the School Building Authority Finance Officer from RIDE to get additional information and to clarify a few things. So one of the items was, he said that there's no, and I, I think I was told by Tara, I think, that it was mentioned at the Building Committee meeting, but at least, I don't know exactly the answer to it. And I know there are people probably tuning into this meeting that didn't tune into Building. I was told that there is no reimbursement on the existing or resurfacing field. So the field that's technically not being touched or relocated, even it's being, even if it's being touched as far as resurfacing, but it's in the same location, I was told by the finance officer that that does not qualify for any of the reimbursement. Is that correct? Or is that, I shouldn't say, I mean, I know that's correct. Is that what the plan is here still?
That is, yep, that's factored in. So that's been in the numbers in the projections that have gone up.
Okay. And then my other question is, I know we have, or we did have at least, an alternative list, kind of like a wish list. So speaking of just the high school, I know each school had a secondary alternative list, just, just for the high school, for this example. I know the high school, I don't have the actual figure, so I'm sorry if I'm off like a little bit, but I believe we were approved, and I know we're probably going over, but I know we were approved for about $123 million for the high school, in that ballpark.
That's correct.
Okay. Are we basing it off the alternative list? Are we basing it off like our wish list? The approved amount to seeing if we can stay as close to that number as possible? Or are we determining the alternative list based on what we're most likely spending, which was like the 157 or that other figure we had?
So the.
A 186.
Alternate list is being driven by the, the total project budget target, which is backed into the tax impact projection. So the RIDE eligible cost, I'll call it, is $157 million across each of the five buildings. The original number everyone remembers is $200 million. When the RIDE approved ineligible amount came through, we dropped that 200 million to a new target of 186 million. So we know that we're always going to be above the RIDE eligible cost of $157 million. So when we talk alternate list, it's shooting for that higher number that maintains the tax impact projection.
So the 187?
186.
Or whatever, a 180 something, okay.
Right around there, exactly.
Okay.
So the alternate list. So the alternate list, the tricky part of it when we're talking building to building is we need to sequence the alternates and take them in order. So the building committee at one of these meetings leading up to the 100% design will need to determine the importance of the alternates and actually prioritize them in a list. And when we award the contract, we'll have to go down that list and choose at what point we stop accepting alternates and award the contract with that value.
Okay.
If we're lucky enough to pull some of the alternates in.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have like two more questions. When the, when the picture of the high school was shown, there was a portion, and I forgot who was speaking, I'm sorry, I forget your name, but you were up here, and you said the administration suite. I just want to confirm, are we talking about the high school administration or the district administration?
Yes.
Okay. So are we still looking at Hugh, are we still looking at other avenues for the district administration? Okay. And then the, since obviously this school is majority brick regardless of what color, and I, I don't know if all brick does this or if something happened, I'm not, I'm not like this, but our elementary school, Rockwell, I just noticed that one because I'm there often, near the windows, it stains. Is that something like with this new building, is it going to be built into like the maintenance? Is that something as easily as it just has to be power washed a year or, because it doesn't look good after a while? I know it's old, but it stains, you know what I'm talking about, right? And it doesn't look good whatsoever. So what causes that and what is, what would the maintenance have to look like for just something like that?
Are you referring to, it's like a white staining?
Yes, yes. Right where the windows, it's always below the windows.
Yep, so it's, it's efflorescence and it's, it's, the chemical composition of the brick and the mortar itself is causing that. It can be cleaned, it can be washed, but it is sort of one of those natural, especially buildings of that era have more efflorescence.
Okay.
We're not seeing it too much. I don't know if we have anything in this particular product that we'd be concerned about, but it's definitely the composition of bricks of a certain genre. So we're not immune to it. Will be a maintenance item to keep an eye on, but that's what it is.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I don't have a, I have a comment.
Tara?
Yep. So first, thank you for the presentation, but my statement isn't necessarily about the presentation, it's more about the process that's been taking place as I kind of wind down my school committee time. First, I want to thank all the members of the community that took the time and effort to try and make a difference. Through their efforts, we were able to get petitions signed from, from both communities of Bristol and Warren. Just what our petition had said was that we wanted the school committee not to take any further action as authorized by the referendum to, and approved by the voters of Bristol and Warren until a second referendum could be added to a future bond, a future vote. And it has been no secret that I have not supported the $200 million bond. It was not until the FY '25 budget process that I truly understood the potential impact we are about to face. I recognize that the building project is going forward. I've been sitting in and participating, but wish to present those efforts to the governing board, and our goal was to get 500 petitions. And so since you are the governing board, I just wanted to follow through with everyone's efforts that did take the time and, and the effort. There was 400, 4,294 voters that approved spending up to $200 million in November of 2024. Much effort was taken by the school district to get the approval. Unfortunately, new facts and information became available after the referendum's approval, including an $8 million lawsuit that Warren faced and the actual RIDE reimbursement that was mentioned tonight. So what is done is done, and it's water under the bridge and I'm ready to, you know, say it's going forward. But the burden is now on the school committee to be responsible with the taxpayers' money. You alone hold all the cards and determine what our communities will look like in the future. The voters approved the spending of spending up to 200 million, but we should be bringing that as close to the 157 million as possible. I will end with the words that Wally Filag had said to me back in the 90s when I first made, was voted onto the school committee. He said, "Congratulations, you've won a seat on the school committee and you are the top vote getter, but when you make this, but when you make decisions, remember that you were still, there were still many that did not vote for you. Be conscious and be responsible with that power." There are eight, there are 18,878 registered voters that did not vote for the 80 or 81% that did not vote for this, this project, this capital project. So for the next 34 years, this and future school committees will have a very heavy financial weight on their shoulders. In the end, I hope it doesn't destroy the towns that we love. So I just want that out in public, that's, I want to say thank you to everyone that came out and supported and tried to make a difference, and we'll move forward from there.
Thank you, Tara. I hear you. Anybody have anything else to say? Questions? Comments? Thank you all very much.
I just had a good comment, sorry. Karen had her hand up.
Oh, Karen, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
I did earlier, but it seems like not as important after she spoke.
It's important if you have a question, no matter what it is.
It was really just about the design update regarding the exterior finishes. I see we have stone, we have shingles, another type of stone, and, you know, two other pictures with different textures, but I feel like all we have is brick. And I don't know if there's anything we can do to make it look a little softer. I just feel like it's not super inviting. That's it.
Yeah, I can, I can start now and please add in. So a lot of the choices for the material, obviously, are durable material, low maintenance. One of the hard things with the elevations that we're sharing with you is there's, there's not a lot of context as far as the landscape of the, of the trees, the design of the, of the walkways. There's a, there's actually a lot more that, that goes into the context of, of this building that you're not seeing on the plain elevation, as well as the, the people and everything around it. But I'll let you add to that now.
Can you come to the microphone just so the folks listening at home can hear you? Thank you.
I mean, as we mentioned, the, the majority of the building is brick. There's a lot of reasons that are good about brick. It's not just cost, but aesthetics. Brick is a, is a building material that it's going to look very beautiful and, and strong, you know, 60, 100 years from now as well. We're very conscious in, in what materials we pick for the project, that they're going to last the lifetime of this building. And in the, in the massing and the scale of the building, we're trying to break down the volumes to sort of bring it down to human scale and bring in, you know, brick blends that do give you a lot of texture and a lot of variety and that kind of, you know, natural like stippling and, and, you know, the way that the sunlight's going to hit it, you get different reflectivity. And I think it, it's hard with a 2D image on a, on a projector to really read that, which is why we brought the samples. If you want to walk through, we're happy to talk through how those blends go together and, and, and give more depth and texture to the facade. But it, but it is intentional. You know, this is a contemporary building. We're very, we want to be authentic. We're, we're building this in 2025. You know, Mount Hope has, the high school has existed on this site, you know, for decades before this building, and we want to honor that. There's a, there's a piece that will be on the interior or the exterior, it's still in flux, exactly where it will be, but there'll be an honorific historic element honoring the old school here. And then there's also Silver Creek, which has obviously been on this site for long, long before any of that. So we want, we, we want to be authentic to, you know, the, the site and the context, but also to time, which is, which is why we're sort of picking this contemporary interpretation of the materials.
Thank you. Kyle?
Yeah, just a comment, not really a question. What I would recommend is going in, scanning the QR code that's in this presentation because it really gives you a sense of space, especially if you go into the VR mode, and you can really zoom in and look at the detail. And I would say this design looks super inviting, especially for students with the open spaces, kind of cozied up within the squares of the village, the open spacing, and the amount of windows, I think, is also fantastic. Just bringing in the natural light, it would be an inviting place, hopefully that faculty and the students are going to enjoy. So I'm really digging the design here.
Thank you. Adam, did you still want to say something?
Yes. Sorry. I appreciate what you just said, Ms. DeBra, about, especially what Mr. Filag said and about you just be conscious of not everyone votes for you and not everyone agrees with you. And I, you know, I think that's important to hear, I think, because it's not something that you want to get stuck on, but we're all in this together. And I, and I do, at least from my perspective, agree that the financial implication of this is pretty important. And I think just when it comes to the design, and I think it was a design that probably similar to what we saw at Yarmouth Dennis, right? And, you know, when I walked away and some of us were there, the word I thought, took away was modest, right? So it's a modest design. It's new, it's, it's going to be a brand new school, it's going to look great, but it's still modest. It's not super flashy. I think, you know, something I know you didn't say here, what you said at the building committee, which I still think is important, is if you can look at the image we're seeing right now, you can see the classrooms. So you have the two slender windows and then the double window, right? And that's a classroom. So looking on that, what is the right and will be the east elevation is four classrooms, so you can get that feel of what's in the interior from the exterior. So again, I said it before, but this is, in my opinion, a thoughtful design. It's not something we've just slapped together. We've put a lot of thought into it and from the sightlines, from the main entrance, it's easy to the back. I think it's, in my opinion, tough to challenge. You know, and you just did say it's in contemporary, right? I know we don't agree with contemporary, but in definitions, maybe we could share, but I think contemporary is, right, architecture of the times. Is that essentially what architecture contemporary is? So what is the architecture of the times? It's open space, utilizing natural light, trying to be efficient with how we heat, how we cool, more of a collaborative space, because I think that's the work environment that our students are going into. So I necessarily don't think contemporary design is a bad thing, right? And I think maybe the other thing you said at the building committee was, right, this isn't downtown Bristol, this isn't downtown Warren, this is away from that. So there can be a change. I mean, I will highlight that. That brick color is very similar to Gittera School, right? That's very similar to St. Mary's on Wood Street. So it's not to say that this is so far out as far as what meets the vision of, of the town and the towns rather. And again, I know we're all not going to agree, but I just think this is a thoughtful design and I appreciate what we're doing here. So thank you.
Thank you. Carly?
One other quick comment. Thank you. I wanted to kind of echo what Kyle and Adam have said. I think it's a very thoughtful design. I also wanted to point out that I feel like it's very appropriate for a public school. I think it's also very appropriate for the setting. I think it's also a very appropriate use of that money that has kind of been whittled down, and we all know the building processes, things have to change and we have to be flexible. I think we've hit as many of the wants that we've been able, that we've all desired from the beginning while still being conscious of taxpayer money by being thoughtful about the other members of our community that aren't involved in this process. But again, I think it's, again, I think the word for me is thoughtful and appropriate, or the words thoughtful and appropriate. I just, I think we're sticking kind of to that ethos and I think what we've seen so far proves that and it's right on track. Thank you.
Jessica?
Well, it's no secret that I'm not a fan of contemporary, but I'm glad it was finally stated that it is a contemporary design. I know back in June when I said it, I was told it was traditional, so I'm glad it, everyone agrees it is contemporary. But I just want to say, as much as I don't like the design of the physical building, no doubt there's been a lot of hard work and energy that has gone into this, so I don't want anyone to mistake in my opinion on the style of the building with the hard work that has gone into it. So to go on Karen's point, no matter what warm, because the materials there, I know people at home can't see, but there are materials and samples of the brick and whatnot physically, that's physically here. And what's presented, that is in tone with the community. However, regardless of the material, it's going on a very contemporary building, so it's never going to get that extreme warm and welcoming that I know you're referring to. But the, the samples here, I know these are not definite as stated, because nothing's been out to bid or anything yet, but the material here seems to keep, seems to be keeping with the tone of the community. So I just want to state, the design absolutely does not overall, but the materials definitely do, in my opinion. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Jess. Anybody else? I just wanted to touch on one point from Tara, because obviously, also as a Warren taxpayer, I am hyper-aware of that responsibility. I totally hear you and I agree 100%. And I've spent the last couple of months talking to folks at the State House, and the question I ask is, is it irresponsible to push this forward now considering what's happening in Warren? And the question that I've gotten 100% of the time was no. It's irresponsible long-term to slow it down, because the costs are going to go up, the reimbursements are going to go down, and the buildings are going to be in worse shape. So I have asked the questions, making sure that I am open to hearing any answer, and that is the answer that I have received 100% of the time. So even though I know it's hard and I look at my neighbors and I look at my friends and I understand 100%, but unfortunately, yes, the lawsuit was something that we couldn't have predicted. But I still believe that long-term, this is more responsible than delaying the inevitable and pushing that down the road. But I hear you about the responsibility.
I just hope that this, I hope that you are correct. I obviously do not want to see the demise of the communities. That's obviously not why any of us are here.
Correct.
So I do not think that anybody here, I think we may all have different perspectives and we may all have different priorities, but I don't think anybody here wants to see the demise of the communities. I really hope that I am completely wrong. I hope that it doesn't change the demographics. I hope that Warren does not become unaffordable. I hope that, I hope that my family can stay here, honestly, in all honesty. I hope my kids can raise their kids here. That's what I hope. So if that works out, I will eat my words. Gladly. I'll gladly eat my words. But if they don't, I will be here, because I will probably still be here, and I will, I will remind everybody that it went hog.
Anything else? Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're moving on to the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the school committee and will be enacted by one motion. Does anybody wish to pull anything from consent? Jessica?
I would like to remove BB only because I have a, a question regarding that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Please, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, accept item BB?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Let's move on to discussion and/or possible action. Let's start with the budget transfer report. Jessica, your question?
I did have, oh, I know, she's not here. I know this did come to budget and I didn't miss it, so I'm sorry I'm asking it here. I know Danielle's not here. But I was looking at this, I had more time to really digest it, and I just had a question regarding a transfer. It's object, hold on a second. It's object 51338, and then obviously the one right under it. So there was $4,485 moved from summer academy teacher to stipend marching band Mount Hope High School, and it says the transfer was to fund a band stipend position, and I'm just not aware of the position, if you could.
No, thank you. And gratefully, Tara asked me this question earlier, so I know the answer to this question.
Oh, perfect.
So this was when marching band was funded, we have a few stipends under marching band, and we divide up the, when we put it into the budget, we divide it up in the right spots, and somehow band director got $50 put in instead of the right amount. And luckily, there was some money left over from summer academy, so we just transferred the money from summer academy into the stipend line. So it's usually in the budget, supposed to be in the budget, just somehow in the breakout, it ended up not getting funded, and when the principal noticed it, she found a way to fix it by moving the money, the leftover money from summer academy. Summer academy just didn't hire as many teachers this year as budgeted previous years.
Okay, so you're saying before this transfer, there was
Okay, so you're saying before this transfer, there was only $50 in that line?
Yes.
Because it was mistaken? All right, so now, when I go look back in the budget, there should be 4,000-
Or whatever, it's something that adds up to a total amount.
Okay, all right, either way, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, and luckily that was the same question Tara asked.
Anybody else have questions on item BB?
I guess we'll get all weekend.
Can I have a motion to approve item BB?
Motion to move.
The budget transfer report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the legislative priorities, so every year, just for the purposes of the public, we meet with our state delegation and talk through, well, first of all, they share with us anything that's happening at the State House that is education-related and that we should be aware of, but we also share with them our priorities and how we want them to work for us at the State House. So we've provided the list, which is pretty much an update just of last year. So we have the enabling legislation review clause, which we would like to have in, one CTE tuition across the state, and then the transportation region. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to add to that list? Anything else? It is also a good opportunity for the superintendent to update on the transportation issue.
So this, last year was actually the second year in a row that we brought this to our legislative representatives, but this year, when we did go to committee to discuss it, they did agree that it needs to be looked at, and not just for Bristol Warren, but all of statewide transportation, so they have put together a statewide transportation commission with membership from both the Senate and the House. So we have a pretty good diverse group, we've only had one meeting so far, and we just did introductions, I happen to be the superintendent rep to that board, so I will keep you updated, but also I'm there to advocate specifically on our behalf, because I, I am able to have a voice at the table. So we have our next meeting in October, so I, I can update you at our, our next October meeting, but we have some goals set for the year, we're going to meet throughout the year and make a recommendation for legislation in the following session. RIDE is presenting at our next meeting, just sharing overall costs, design, kind of what the purpose of statewide was, and then a little conversation around how the regions were determined, and kind of kick us off with some base information before we start to make some further discussions.
When is the next meeting?
October the 9th, I want to say, hold on one second, let me tell you.
While the superintendent's looking that up, does anybody have questions or comments on the transportation issue?
Yep, it's October 9th.
I have a question.
Yes, Karen?
What, do we have like an average amount of, do we know how many children are actually taking the bus? I know it has to be offered, but I'm, it just seems like it's not being used to its fullest extent, and we have, you know, lines of vehicles with parents dropping off their kids rather than putting them on the bus.
Oh, you're talking about the Bristol Warren buses? Yes. So we did a, a ridership audit last year, and so did the bus company, and so we have those as comparisons, because we're going to go out to bid later this year for our in-district transportation. So something to remember is that our ridership is, is based on the largest ridership during our three tiers, so it tends to be our middle school route that, that has the most ridership, so however many buses we need to transport middle school students is how many we pay for. So sometimes we may see a high school bus, or even an elementary bus, that may look kind of empty or not full, but we're paying for that bus anyway, so, so we route them in the most convenient way for students. But we will look at that overall again when we go out to bid, and looking at, you know, what's happening to the population in our district, and just review that when we, when we set up our, our process for our next contract.
It just seems, not that I don't want to offer the buses, it just seems like they're not being taken advantage of for transportation across the board.
We try to encourage everyone to use the buses, it certainly makes the morning drop-off and afternoon pickup much easier when we're putting kids on, on buses, but sometimes because of whatever family circumstance, it's just better for the families to do, you know, their own pickup and drop-off, but certainly we try to encourage it as much as we can. And remember, we lost a lot of ridership during COVID, so we're still kind of recouping from that, and so hopefully we can get to a place where we're getting more students, you know, right? And the ridership is always better when the weather is good and it's not as dark, but as darkness comes, we tend to also see more parents bringing kids to school in the morning because it's dark.
Right. I, I have one question, not about transportation, it's about the CT tuition rate statewide, but along with that, I know, I remembered seeing in one of your memos that you were looking at having them kind of streamline the definitions of some CTE programs, so that we don't have so many kids going to other districts for basically the same program that we're offering. Is that a legislative, would that be a legislative request, or would that be something that we would want to bring to our legislature?
It could be up for discussion, the CTE board currently determines which programs are substantially similar, but they're given that authority through legislation, it could be a conversation to have with our legislators for sure. That could be something we add.
So we could add, just add that to that-
Sure.
Number two. That make sense?
Yep.
So can I have a vote to approve this list of legislative priorities that we will bring to our legislative breakfast?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent, can we get some dates on the calendar for that breakfast through, through your office?
Sure.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is the end of the public session, we'll only come out to adjourn the meeting again. Thank you.